Good afternoon, everyone. If you're watching this, you're watching another in the series of COVID-era extraordinary border selectmen's meetings, today being Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. And we've dispensed with most of the formalities. So as usual, we're going to start off with an update on any COVID-related matters. I think we'll start with our health agent, Bob. Do you have anything to offer?
Unfortunately, we've still got, you know, no positive cases in town. The Holden said yesterday that some fire chief built a walk-through school. We see we have concerns about the actual spacings and what's on in there, what it plans on. Everything's solid on paper. Now it's just a matter of how well the follow-up will be. Because things are great on paper, but they're so well in reality. But I'm really thankful, definitely, a lot of people will be in touch with me with any questions or concerns.
Good.
One of the things that I did learn through DPH, just when this comes up, are air quality, the air handlers, just the specifications of the actual units. I was turnover ratios, which dictated in the specs of the equipment and monitored by the facilities manager. Any questions that they would have, they could ask us. But the ultimate responsibility was the people who stay in the building due to their quality issue comes through the school. That's their primary concern, not what else. So we can have input, and certainly happy to help. However, we have to make sure that it's a COVID air quality issue versus, oh, my room's a little cold, or my room's a little hot, or those things, you know. You need the air flow. And the one question I have to get the answer for is, can they have the ceiling fans?
Okay.
Because I didn't have an answer.
In the kindergarten, there's sailing fans in each of the rooms, and then there's, on the back section of the building, there's the strata fans?
Yeah. And that's where the question was.
Okay.
So I like the idea of being circulated, but what about, because right now, you can have a fan in a room if it's vital and forcing the air out. But you shouldn't have a fan over here forcing the air out. There's nobody going to be around from above and down.
Okay.
So I think the likely window of how it's getting that high, just, I don't see it.
Well, depending on whether there are assaults or not, as opposed to the larger outbreak.
Exactly.
Because you could open up the windows on that, on the ramps on the way down, there's windows, so you could open those. But the reason why they installed the strata was to get the heat down, because those rooms were too hot.
Absolutely. And then we're very quiet on West Madison and Triple Lee also. So that was good.
Good. That's encouraging. Move on over to our fire chief.
Do you want to talk about the council meeting?
Sure. I'll start with that. Corrector Wallace submitted a request for the Council on the Ban to CARES Act. We spent a lot of time, Ken and I, trying to locate one. We located one. We had the quote, and literally by the time we received the quote and went to get the stick, waiting to plan, that van was gone. So that one we will hit immediate delivery of, and that happened in one day. We contacted them again, they're able to get us a van with the handicap route, that meets all of our needs within the next three weeks. But she prefaced, I said, if we don't get the quote back today, she's not, she's dead here, never hear it out of the zap. So I do have that quote prepared for your signature. It's $55,960.46. And I met all of the council agents requiring this.
I would make a motion to approve the expense, so that we can get the van through the CARES Act money.
Absolutely. Second, all those in favor?
And you'll, as part of that, authorize Tom to sign the half of the term. Too dangerous now. Chief, anything else?
Yep. David, so the project at the elementary school has been moving along. They don't, they have the new areas ready. They're going to move the fire hydrant on Tuesday. The biggest problem we have now is getting a paving contract that gives us support for that estimate in six to eight weeks to get us the quote, let alone the paving. Matt Lecker was able to contact Prestige Paving. They did come out yesterday and gave us two different quotes to do the blacktop over there. The first one is, the first quote is to blacktop the areas that Steve's guys have already prepared, so the dirt, I don't know if it's all driven by the dirt areas, and then we have fire hydrants in that area. That quote is $24,900. And then Steve Hambler said, just, you know, to get a quote of resurfacing both sides, like the end that goes out also, and that would be roughly additional $25,000. Not sure, you know, I think we, I'd agree that that piece needs to be done, not sure if the rest, doing the whole thing at once makes sense to you?
Well, I mean, we're going to run out of time one way or the other. So it's always costly doing it in two pieces for having one piece melt.
Yeah. The only difference is this is the exercise also, but...
Well, but it means to get done.
It, it, well, it means to get done, but it's not as critical for the...
Well, I guess then if it's, if we need part A to get done in order for school to reopen, but not part B to get done, then I get, and there's not going to be a significant difference in cost by waiting, then yeah, I can do it in two parts. If, if it's easier for the contractor, in the sense of the contractor's already there and has equipment there...
Well, it's probably two parts of time. One thing was, the quote as different than Matt Lecker, if I, if I added both of them up, came up slightly over $50,000, so I don't know how that, if that triggers...
Yeah, it triggers lots of things.
Right. So I knew that. So Matt feels that if they were to do both, they would get that, cost would come down below $50,000, probably somewhere...
Well, after this, ask me about it, I'll look it up on the chart to see what we'll have to do for procurement at below 50. Because I believe, I need to check to see what the requirements are.
In general, it's three or four.
I understand. It's, we better say things sorry, like ensure that we do everything right.
When do we need to get back to them, I guess, is the operative question.
Well, ASAP, if you want to.
And that's why, if we don't have to do any notices or anything like that, it can be much quicker.
Well, the earliest we're going to meet again is Monday.
Right. But you can direct, I mean, you can provide direction to go forward, to do the necessary procurement, and if, once bids are in, if we need bids or we need quotes to authorize award below bid.
Yeah, okay.
I feel more comfortable doing one side right now, the one that really needs to be done, the one that'll work, and they'll work on the other one later, because we're running into tight on the money side.
Is any of this covered? Did we just...
Well, that's the whole thing. We're doing, as I talked about this early this month, we're doing, or last month, this is at risk.
Right.
In the sense of...
We think it might be, but we don't...
Right. And until, unless it basically sort of, until we see a check come in, we don't know whether it's going to be covered. Because Todd Ryan said it's highly questionable, and the decision was, we're going to move forward anyway, even if we're not...
But, yeah, because we're going to have to do something to alleviate the problem over there.
So I talked to Ken yesterday, so it's almost, it sounded like they're anticipating double the amount of drop-offs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that can be part of the narrative. That can be part of the narrative that I submit to Tom.
Sure, right.
I mean, it's definitely because of...
Right. Right, that's a direct cause, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, look, I think...
That isn't the point.
I think that we make an excellent case, but whatever we're spending, we're doing so at risk.
I think we need to get the parking lot done as soon as possible, so I would make, if we can authorize the vote for the $24,000 and do a conditionary...
That we have fulfilled the requirement or...
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's where I would go.
All right, so... So what you said, what I said earlier is go for one side, the side that really needs to be done right now for the $24,000?
Well, I think we still try to get that done before we, before it comes out, right? Like, we try to get the procurement question...
Well, I can, a little later this afternoon, I should be able to answer the procurement question. The, what you probably want the board to do is authorize you to move forward with this project, that however, we have, knowing that we have to follow the procurement cost for, let's say, at a $24,000 level, and that, you know, speedily do what we need to do in order to fulfill those requirements. Once those are completed, if they're needed, then the award is to the low bidder, and we move along and get the work done.
So maybe the, the motion should be to definitively go forward with paving the new section, and tentatively go forward, will you approve it to go forward, subject to the fact it doesn't need any additional procurement?
Well, okay, but if we do it in two pieces, you're talking two different procurements. If you're doing it in one piece, you're talking one procurement. It's simpler, I'm fairly sure dividing into two will allow us to do a simpler procurement for each section, but I have to go downstairs for a look.
The other part of the people that, I don't know, like Matt feels he'll come in at the 50 if we do it all at once. I would, I mean, that's him bringing out all his stuff, additional time, so...
Well, again, this is why I need to look, if, unfortunately, I need to stay up here, or else I'd go downstairs. But if you want, you know, we can, we can get in, we can finish our, we can finish our business, you can recess for a couple of minutes, I'll go back downstairs and look.
That's exactly what I was going to offer. Okay, recess for a few minutes and let you figure it out. Okay. All right, moving on.
This is a request from the Fire Department, emergency management, as far as there's a testing need for our mobile integrated health program, which will work with Dr. Mucian, establish global COVID testing, and possibly an option to be approved by the state vaccinations if they're authorized for our campus or residence. We don't currently have a vehicle for that. We've reached out to several vendors, and vehicles in general are really hard to come by, as I explained to the council agents, one minute for there, but it's going to be kicked out, because we under the law. Yeah, there's a lot of different issues with it, but the Fire Department kind of need to meet certain criteria. So that is an SUV, and then there's a, for a pickup truck, for emergency management, as you know, we've done deliveries, pickups, are all on the level. And that would be used to support our sheltering operations, delivery, pickup of food, PPE, et cetera. We have quotes on both of these. The prices are in there. The vehicles, like I said, probably not, is stuff that's not available if we wait days, so it's, that's why we're, that's a part of immediate consideration.
And we're under the, we're under the gun, so to speak, in terms of having to get it done, regardless of the availability issue.
Right. So even when you get them here, if you authorize today, getting them here was, we're going to get a vehicle before October 1st.
Right. And but, what I think Sandy and I are trying to push up from the county is a question, will a purchase order or an invoice rather than just payment be sufficient to, in essence, encumber the money?
I submitted the same question to Tom O'Brien on behalf of the Fire County Fire Chiefs. So if you have a response, I'll...
There was no meeting that I attended, that was a conference meeting, and they said that if it wasn't approved or something, that you would, they would not take that on the day. So I would ask again, but that was what I wrote this week.
Anyone have a question?
Yes. Are these required, or are they at risk of the time spending on money ahead of time? How much are they quoted at?
What, S U V for a community current location, $4,900. The other truck is $28,500. We used this Plymouth County contract price and used our court spin codes, we got the lowest possible price. So when you look at the sticker on them, they're up to $10,000 off of a sticker, if not even more.
Are they necessary? Are they required by law?
If not by law, required, none.
And would we be at risk as taxpayers for not getting that funded, even level funding that we might not get?
So the requests that we, the requests that we put forward have already been put forward by other communities, almost exactly, and they've already been reversed from Plymouth County entirely. Is there more to the policy question?
Just to offer, I had a conversation with Plymouth County Treasurer, and as long as it's COVID-related, he was, he was confident that it would be covered.
Right. And... Emergency vehicles, no cost to the power, which should, only in my opinion, be serviced.
So is a car to be settled in the tax state-wise? Or should the state and federal be still be taxed?
Tax?
Yeah. Because all, yeah, all the money comes from the taxpayers.
Sure. Oh, how you want to say it. The other part is that...
Either we use it or somebody else uses it. So you're going to pay for it anyway.
This is the big point in the United States, though, if we keep going and die at that rate.
We're not arguing that. Nobody's arguing that.
So, as I mentioned to the board, once the pandemic is over, these will not be additional, we'd be able to reduce our fleet. We have some retired police crews that we're using now, that, you know, will really, that impact our vehicle maintenance bills, and do, you know, be able to use these as replacements once the pandemic is over. So things that we have on our capital plan next year will be off the capital plan.
That was an added benefit.
So we do have vehicles that we are using for this now that are in good enough, in...
No, we don't need them.
Police, we have, we have police vehicles.
No, we have police vehicles that we're using for other purposes, but once the pandemic is over, these vehicles can be used for other purposes besides COVID.
Correct. But we have some.
What do you need from the board?
Operator, they have it, just authorize it to be improved for all with the purposes.
Something, do I have a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
I think that's all I have.
Sure. Chief Shaw?
I know, it's ringing up.
No, I actually have a, I have a proposal I'm putting together for the board for the next meeting, in regards to a gas mess. And now I have to...
Okay. So just in terms of next meeting, your normal meeting would be on Monday, we're not meeting Monday because of Labor Day?
Correct.
Correct. So we're meeting on Thursday?
Unless anybody objects to that and wants to meet them.
Do they have any cookouts? Do you have any hot dogs?
So we don't have a regular meeting that Tuesday night?
You have your regular meeting on the Tuesday, yes.
Okay, so...
But Chief, well, if the Chiefs bring, oh...
The noon, the 1:30 meeting is off because of the holiday.
Right.
So Gordon, you had...
So I, I'm recusing myself as selectman here and acting as a member of the school committee, just so that everyone's aware of that, because I took votes on these, so I can't take a vote as a selectman. So after a long meeting, a four-hour meeting on the elementary school on Monday, the request from the elementary school is for three long-term subs to be paid for out of the CARES Act until December 31st, at a cost of $16,431.14 per teacher. These teachers would be used for second, third, and fourth grade.
So there's three, Gordon?
There's three.
So that brings it up about 49.2?
Yep. And then the other cost, that, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one, I'm reading Silverlake, sorry. That, so the cost for the long-term subs for the Halifax Elementary is $16,408. Sorry, so that's times three.
Yeah.
And then the long-term sub, if they hired them as of September 7th, which is a stretch, but it would be at $150 a day, because that's what all the surrounding communities are paying for, for a building-based sub. So that's somebody that just comes to the building every day, whether there's somebody out or not. That cost is $11,100. So the committee is asking for three long-term classroom subs to be hired until at least December 31st, because the situation with those classrooms is that we need to have three for second, third, and fourth. We have to have three classrooms in the class. We only have four teachers, but in order to support the remote students, we need to have two classroom teachers teaching remote. So we need to add the extra teacher. And, you know, if the hybrid system continues for the full year, I'm not sure what we're going to do, but with the requirement that we have to spend the money by December 31st, we didn't know if it was a possibility to have a contract that was paid out by December 31st and covered the full year. That was, we, we don't know the answer to that, so that's why this is that request.
So for now, this is the best thing?
This is the best request that we can come up with. There might be, if the deadline changes, I think the school committee would come back and ask for, to staff these positions for the full year. The other question was about adding a custodial staff member to be there during the daytime, but I don't think we actually voted that. I think we talked about it after the vote. So it would be whether or not the board would entertain a request for a custodial staff to be added while school is open, so there's somebody else going around cleaning all the doors, wiping down everything, being in the cafeteria. I just, I don't have the cost for that, because Christine just came back from vacation.
Well, conceptually, I think it's a valid proposal.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to offer. I mean, it makes sense.
So, of course, everything's subject, well, not subject, just so that everybody's clear, if for whatever reason we have an outbreak in the school and the school goes to complete remote, we're still going to be paying for these people. Well, so the request was for while the hybrid and in-school teaching was the, the agreed upon plan, for lack of better wording, while hybrid's happening or full in-person's happening. Once, if we go to a full remote, I'm, I'm not sure what the assignment would be, but right now, we have to prepare for this.
No, no, I just wanted to...
We're only going to be, the actual reimbursement comes with a bill, in the sense of, and if we went full hybrid and for some reason we didn't need these, we only could send in the actual cost to Plymouth County. What we're more interested in is, A, having the board make that commitment, and B, making sure Plymouth County that this will be a reimbursable expense.
Right. So I guess what I'm looking for is the board to authorize the expense of these positions, and if the board would entertain next week the request for the maintenance custodian to be added, I just need to get that information from Christine.
Yeah, we can put that on the agenda for...
Is that part of the whole budget in total?
I, I just don't, I don't have what the custodial... Yep.
That would be, so for the, for three teachers, the three substitute teachers, and then one building substitute, it's $60,312.
But we're getting three building substitutes, right?
Three long-term subs?
Yeah.
And then one building?
One building.
So that, that's the request that I'm bringing forward today.
I don't see a issue for you.
I mean, it makes sense under the current situation. So do you want to make a motion, Mr. Aaron?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I recuse.
So then, you want to wear your...
Now I need to put on my Silverlake hat, so I get to refuse myself again as the Silverlake rep. And this is the contract that I printed up by accident. So the request from Silverlake is for a building sub for the high school and a building sub for the middle school, for Halifax to pay that portion. There was a long discussion over whether or not Kingston or Plington are going to ask for long-term subs, or if they're going to cover something else that's required. But right now, they have not, right now, Silverlake only has Mike as the only rep that's on Silverlake, so we didn't have feedback from Christine at that meeting, and then we didn't have feedback from the Kingston selectman. What we were told at our meeting was Kingston's already spent all their money, and then the Phase 4 money would all go towards the schools. And we voted to send the board's selectmen a letter requesting that if the town's budget is 50% for the schools, that 50% of the money be associated to the schools. They weren't sure if they were going to send that to Halifax, because we've actually been offering to do things where the other boards have not been communicating as well. So the request is for the building sub rate at $11,100 for two, for Silverlake. We did not discuss adding custodial staff at that meeting.
So you have the long-term subs and you have the building subs, so are you, sort of like asking just Halifax to fund two building subs and no, no long-term subs?
We did not, we did not have a discussion where we knew the answer to how many long-term subs that we would need. We hiring contract negotiations and a memorandum agreement where some of these issues are coming up, and I could see possibly us coming back to ask for Silverlake for more, but the committee was respectfully requesting these two positions to be funded.
Now, he's substitutions, are they eligible for medical benefits, vacation time, where you go?
The building-based subs at $150 are just a straight per diem cost, and then the long-term sub, the way it was explained to me, is the first 20 days, they're paid at the sub rate of $95, and then they're paid at the step one of the chart, because after 21 days, they're becoming employees. So there could be increased costs for health insurance, but I think that the school could cover that cost, and they're not asking that.
Then there's unemployment at the end of it, if they...
Well, so the, the idea is to have them sign a contract for 90 days, so that there is no unemployment. It's a...
Okay. Thanks.
Sandy, did you have a question?
My husband said, I was talking to Nicole yesterday, and she said, after three months, we have to off our jobs. But I think if we break that down, contracted, so it's just for the September through, and I keep telling Christine, you really need to kind of, so the mid-December, like just before the December break, because we have to get that payroll check process and submit it to the community. We have to reimburse it all before the end of December. So if you did it for three months, now we're not responsible for our revenues. If they go longer than that, then we have a structural problem.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
Is the availability of personnel?
Well, so that's the other question. We, so where I was pushing this idea from the school committee, I opened up School Spring, and all the other schools are now pushing this. So the Brian DeSantis, the vice principal, who's in charge of substitute teachers at the elementary school, said he has interviewed no one so far.
I'm not surprised.
For just regular subbing, not, not this long-term sub position.
So this may ultimately end up being moved anywhere.
It, it could be.
Yeah. But we have, we have to try to prepare for it.
The idea was if we put out, if the board approved it today, that they could post the positions, and then they could try to interview and try to bring in somebody right away, so that they could get trained through all this professional development training that they're trying to get, so they'd be effective teachers right away.
Yeah, that makes sense. So entertain a motion?
I move it, we've got information to forward.
Second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I recuse myself from that. Thank you both.
Or anything else on COVID at this point?
Tom, you said you're going to have a meeting with Tom O'Brien?
Yeah, I haven't fixed it yet. Yeah, I, I haven't fixed it yet. We spoke briefly at the presentation on Monday afternoon and I told him I would get in touch with him the end of the week, the first of the week, and just set up a casual meeting and then we could discuss some of this stuff.
Okay.
And I did get, um, one of the people here, the billing had indicated whether the town should pursue an emergency shelter, in a sense, a new building that could be quickly put up for an emergency shelter. The idea being that if we ended up with an influx of COVID cases here in Halifax where hotels and motels sometimes have been used, in essence, people have isolated so they're in quarantine and they're staying away from their families and such, we don't obviously have that situation here in Halifax. Obviously, there are a lot of hurdles to jump over in that, in a sense of finding a space, getting it, going out to bid, et cetera, getting utilities put in, you know, basically everything you would think of for building a building. Um, it's certainly conceivable, especially if we were in a larger community. I mean, they had field hospitals and things like that in other places. Um, so I did promise to run that by the board. I meant, I don't have anything to work with. There are no specifications. There's nothing else. Um, and I didn't know whether the board had any interest in even spending any time looking at that.
We can look at it. I, I don't see any harm in looking at something like that, whether.
Well, you know, I think it's a good idea, but it's not as feasible to do something like that. We were always talking about getting the building for the council on aging. And if we stop and everyone do a whole building, I think you get a little kickback.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Can we upgrade Pope's Tavern to be the long-term shelters so we have funds?
Well, well, I, I was thinking about the roof project and I'm thinking to myself, this is where the uh council on aging personnel operate out of to administer to people indeed. Uh, maybe we can get some of that covered or the roof covered, which would be a wonderful thing. Uh, if we could tie that in, that's one of the things I wanted to bring up to the county. Um, I, 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 I'm not opposed.
You could talk to Tom about it.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah. And I'm not opposed to exploring anything. It doesn't mean we're gonna go down that road, but we'd be remiss not to at least look at it. If it's not feasible or not practical, yeah, then so be it, but at least that's my thought on it.
And, and he thought of the way you would place this?
No, the person just had the idea they weren't giving me a full set of plans or even a location.
I mean, we may, we may just dismiss this on a hand, but I think we should at least look at it.
Um, anything else? Okay, so I'm gonna start knocking out a few of the other things on the agenda. Um, on the updates for Plymouth Street, I went to the Plymouth Street and Hundred Lake Street. I did see Alan Diaz yesterday. He said the trash has been picked up at Hundred Lake Street. He's working with Attorney Mayo. Obviously, the Board of Health is involved, Aunt Fanny May on trying to deal with the situation at one sixty-three Plymouth. I don't have any more information at this point. Yeah?
Listen, I had a Zoom meeting that the, the Council of the magistrate and what we agreed to was on Tuesday night at nine o'clock in the morning, Alan and myself are gonna go in and do an interior housing inspection to see if this actually fits in the capation. Uh, right now the apartment was owned by Danny May.
Yeah.
And they have an fire attack.
Right.
It's not a tech. It's an army. So, um, they can't just blow up a building. You can't pick them up. You can't even technically start a sort of process yet. So the agreement was that we'd be able to get into, into the apartment first so it's gonna be some cleaner work. We'd be done with the body of him over this weekend so that emergency personnel and myself could access that building in the event that someone's gonna be looking at. Uh, environmental concern that I have is that the epoxy chemicals being stored in the boat. Uh, paint, bears, oil, things like that, the worm, ground, uh, you put it into the boat, but I don't think that's a safe storage area. We have a fund as soon as he, one of the moms he has also. I have pictures, so, you know, it, it, it's pretty good size enough, you know? Um, there's many barrels throughout the whole area and a bit full down the back which can see the breeding ground areas so that you can have those removed, kept over so that you don't have any mosquitoes on site. And if we can be habitable, the water department could turn in and reestablish a water pump. Right now it's posted unattainable, but if they get water and they pass a regular inspection and when I do an inspection, I go write orders, there's time constraints, there's correction that has to be done. Um, forbid a turn on the water at that set time if there's any money spilled to the county because the water's been turned off since ten nineteen. However, we've personally seen water going outside. So you may have capped the system without, you know, and so if there's a meter difference between ten nineteen and now, Danny May also can't water it because he, he's not gonna pay the water, but Danny May's gonna pay the water.
I'll be on second, you guys information, right? Do you want to settle the guy's information? Maybe we could ask him if it is, I think, okay.
And then we'll have a follow-up meeting with the Department of magistrate on nine twenty-two to find out if any of the improvements that have been requested have been made or would we stand at that point in time and how would we move forward? So it's a little bit more of a, a, a dress. I mean, the chief may give uh on nine o'clock in the morning, if you wanna come and take a look. Sure. Two seven one. I'm tolerating two seven. Two seven. Two seven. Sure.
Um, for the wage and personnel board, Gordon needed to resign as the board's selectmen's designate.
Yep.
Um, the board is supposedly in about twenty minutes we're having wage and personnel. Um, the board needed to choose someone else to represent as the board's designate. There are a couple of matters still remaining to make recommendations at town meeting. Um, Melinda will be on Zoom at that point. Um, I don't know what the board wants to do.
Just ban the wage personnel.
So.
Just ban the wage personnel.
Um, we have a couple of matters on compensation um remaining. There's one question on the building maintenance director, whether we're doing that as an ungraded or as a grade fourteen. Um.
The grading took place. It's just the recommendation.
Whether there's any general, um, whether it's gonna be a general cross-the-board wage increase or not. You know, it's been on the agenda. The wage and personnel has not made a recommendation one way or the other on that.
Do you have any interest, Mr. Garrett?
I don't know.
I can probably answer for you.
That's one of my favorite things to do.
Well, not one of my favorite things either, but I'll, I'll do it if nobody else will do it.
Okay, so if the board, if someone would make a motion to have Tom as the designate for the board select for the wage and personnel board?
Right.
Well, Troy, if you wanna move, Troy's second, and then you can vote if Gordon needs to leave himself.
I think I need to recuse myself.
Well, that's what I was gonna do, but I can't get appointed if I recuse myself. I, I'll, I, if I can make the motion, I guess I'll move me as the wage and personnel representative from the board of selectmen. Go ahead, say the board of wage and personnel board. Unless you want it, Mr. Garrett, I do wanna have.
Second.
Okay, he was clear. All those in favor?
Aye.
They reluctantly, uh.
I recuse.
And I'll tell Melinda you're coming if we, one way or the other, we'll get that done. Um, we discussed the town meetings earlier this morning. I didn't think there was anything else. I left it on the agenda just in case. Um, I know the, and the board had during their meeting on, in the morning, it specifically said they're not going to be considering at this point changing the form at all. Um, there's no vote scheduled. There's nothing happening with that. Larry, just wanted to make sure that you understood there's a notice period. So at some point in the future, the board wanted to do that. We have to issue a public notice, I believe, seven days in advance of the vote and then it would be effective later on. But at this point, my understanding based on this morning is that the board has, doesn't have any intention of doing that. Is that correct?
And I apologize for dropping the call just as you guys went to vote. My laptop died and I plugged it in and it took two minutes to.
I apologize, the personnel vacuuming. I didn't realize it was resonating through my speaker there. Sorry about that.
Is someone playing Fortnite?
No, I don't know what they were dropping up above me there.
Okay. Um, update on the billing commissioner versus Lawrence J. Marvel trustee. Um, we have a packet from Attorney Questle on filings in the court cases. No action from the board, but just so the board's aware that that's going on. Uh, the twenty-twenty cops hiring program, the board did receive a note basically saying that unfortunately, we did not get funding for this year and obviously recommending that, you know, encourage the agency to reply again in future funding cycles.
It's actually a good thing, you get it. It's good that we have a really mess on our hands.
Yeah. Um, cemetery, interment, Saturday interment fees. You have a note from Steve Haywood. This was on the question of why the fees would be going down. He said, "We will not be using heavy equipment. There will never be more than one person to do the interment." After looking at it, I don't think it's right to charge for a service that's not being used. So what he's recommending is that reduction for the Saturday interments from five hundred to three hundred for residents and for non-residents from six hundred to four hundred.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. You received a recycling abatement request. This is from twenty eighteen for bill seven ninety. I guess, Kim, if I have it wrong, you can tell me, but basically the person felt, oh, I thought I got all this done. Here's the paperwork and here's the dates, but I never can cut it in. And so, um, and they did, you know, they do have a letter from Julie indicating that they're a customer. Um, I didn't know what the board wanted to do with it.
Was it, was their customer doing it two, two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah. That's what the letter is. They, I think they put everything together because it says in fact, you know, uh, for July eight, this is from Julie. This is July eighteen. So it was a letter from Julie back then. They just never filed it.
I just question why it took them so long to do that. But if the paperwork's in order, I would move that we have been to nineteen, to ninety?
Seven ninety.
Seven ninety.
How much?
The, it's bill number seven ninety. Sorry, the, the bill was the fifty dollar.
Okay, I was trying to be sure what we were talking about.
Yeah.
So it's the philosophical issue on this bill again.
Yeah, and that's the problem I'm having. I mean, how far back do we go with this stuff? And once you open the door, you, you keep going, but.
We, we told other people no that didn't get the paperwork in. I mean.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm at. Not that I wanna deprive anybody, but how, how do you not be consistent?
And we, I mean, I'm for abating it, but I'm not for abating all of them that come forward late that don't provide, we don't provide the service to, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of in the same place. Not kinder, I'm in the same place. Um, so I'm, I don't know.
Is there, so is there, there's no second to Troy?
There's no second.
Okay, so could you make the opposite motion so it's on the record?
Do you wanna make it?
I'm moving to not abate seven ninety, bill number seven ninety.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, on the interment versus Halifax, um, appeals case number one, that's now up at, there are documents the appeals court, there's no action made by the board. On the Monty and Johnson Halifax Land Court case, that was closed out by the court on April twenty-seventh in favor of the plaintiffs, uh, Monty and Johnson. And so the only thing I've got left, if the board wants to take a recess for two minutes, come back in a public session, I'll get the answer on the construction procurement for the paving. And then after that, the board can go into executive session, but oh, you should wait until we get back out of the recess to do that.
Right, okay.
Is that agreeable?
I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor, aye? Okay, we're back in session. Our recess is over.
Here's the report. I talked to the chief. I went over the procurement laws. What the board should do is declare this to be an emergency procurement. The five o'clock and the school staff and everybody else has already done some of the work that would normally done, done on a procurement for under fifty thousand dollars. One of the requirements is that they try and obtain three quotes for the work to be done. They've gotten one quote. The requirement is to try. You don't have to get, keep knocking on doors until you get three. What you have to do is contact legitimate firms and say to them, can you provide us a quote on this? They've done that with three firms. Two of them have said, sorry, we're booked. We can't get this done. So by declaring emergency procurement, you can eliminate the other requirements um that would normally done, be done in this fashion. Um, and then they'll be able to, and what you're asked, why it's an emergency is it needs to be done in a timely manner in order to be completed by the time school opens in a couple of weeks.
Right, and, and I think it's appropriate. If we can get it done right, let's get it done right.
You mean the whole project or just the one side?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
I'll move that.
So do we need to move that it's an emergency?
Yes.
Then.
I, I need you to vote that it's, you're declaring it to be an emergency.
We're supposed to include that it's an emergency, actually.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And if we could just go back one to the COVID. So Bob, on the walkthrough, the school committee did a walkthrough of the building and there was one room up in the second floor where the univet is literally shaking like this and the window is shaking just as much.
That was identified. Uh, there's a scrap that they use, something that holds a block of wood so that the window doesn't shake as, as violent.
My understanding was there was a leak that was observed too.
It's gonna have the, the unit pulled off.
I think it's just not balanced.
Yeah, but, you know.
That's usually what it is, is it needs to be balanced.
So maybe it needs to be remedied, maybe it needs replaced, but the thought is let's get that. A bunch of those things we have to worry about.
And then.
And all the minor parts too.
And then, and then I think the, the building inspector identified the potential leak or somebody identified a leak.
So we had a couple of seal, wet seal cars and it looks, well, actually looked at it, tried to turn it, goes from flashing from the windows. I know some of those windows that, the ones that open out, they actually moved them from the bottom to the top because water was coming in, so.
They flip-flop.
And then other ones, if you push them too far open, and then you get the downfall like we did yesterday, it's the back of the windows, and then, and yeah, the back of the window, and it was getting the soap. Just close the window a little bit and it stops that part.
Well, well, one of the things, and I'm glad you brought it up because I had forgotten about it until you mentioned it, was that we needed to look to see what the warranty was.
Yes.
Because the warranty and all the work was kind of staggered.
You know, I, Robbie talked with me about that. I need, I wanna start off by calling John Lemieux.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We called Vertex.
So there's, there's at least two tiles in the kindergarten wing that were wet and I don't know if that was library roof flashing or if that's school roof flashing. And then the other.
There was a tile on the second floor, right? There was a red tile on the second floor, right?
Second floor.
Yeah.
And what's interesting.
The merger was the flashing and it was the siding.
What's interesting is we haven't really even had that heavy rain over the last few days. I mean, we've had some heavier rains since that.
It sounded like some of those have been stained for a while.
Well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't have been because they're brand new.
Yeah, and somebody should have at least noticed.
Well, I mean, a while. They've only been there for a year.
Yeah, yeah, still.
Just not, I'm saying like it didn't happen in the past week.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it hasn't been the heaviest of rains either recently.
So they, they, the principal did say that Cape Way had been there and there was an issue with the flashing and the gutter was clogged, so they did fix that?
The only rain.
Cape Way was all, they couldn't go.
That was roofing Cape Way.
Yeah.
Yeah, the gutter issue is that they were still, they were still addressing that, right? They said that they were out last week to do something. They said that they were out last week to do something with the gutter, and I think they were continuing on that.
Okay, well, that's good.
But on your warranty point, we, so I know from dealing with the high school and middle school, we are required to have those inspected by someone once a year. I just want to make sure that we, we're doing that at the school. And I'm not sure if that falls on the school or if it falls on the board of selectmen because we authorize the work at the school.
Well, this is the, this is the whole discussion we were having about the supervisor of maintenance and why we wanted somebody involved so that we could take some control. Because those are the things that never get done. And then of course, well, anyway, I don't want to go down that whole line.
So the other, just so everyone's aware, the other spot that we saw is when you're in the library and your back is towards the field, the little cove to the left, it looked like there was water issues up in that. So it's the, the one that has the two floors that go up and you're standing up against the univat to the left in the library. It, it either looked like there were water issues or mold issues up in that area. Or just painting issues, but-
That's not the type of stuff that was replaced, just the windows, firemen.
Well, it might have, it might have been affected because on the second floor over that, that's like where it sticks out and drops down. So that was the other thing that-
Well, again, you should probably put that on the list and have Vertex take a look at it. Because then it's a matter of whether it's the library roof or the roof that ties into it.
When I say the library roof, I mean the school library.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry.
On the, the side next to the fields.
Oh, okay. Well, definitely that's been in recent work, so.
And then the only other issue was the tiles in the, the section that's near the, um, the first floor section under the second floor on the backside closest to the fields. The tiles all around the doors from where they did the work, they, they're all starting to crumble pretty bad. So I, I think you're gonna see that as an issue moving forward. And I'm just bringing it up because we did the walkthrough and it was all related to the, trying to make sure we were prepared for COVID.
I'm listening to Josh hold on one of the things. Yeah, there was a bunch of us, but nobody in the area was big as what he used to be in that.
Compared to the school, on the whole, compared to the six years ago, it was amazing. We saw, even on holiday, we have six pages less than I think we had a handful of things. Really minor things yesterday.
Yeah, I can remember removing the ceiling panels and looking at the wiring.
And we have pockets down the hallway catching drips from the central system.
So did, just because Scott is not the building director at this point in time, did he walk with you guys and not?
We, we had a darkness monitor.
Okay.
So we had a canyon with us, rawhide and rock.
Okay.
And the damn building had the sodium box.
Okay.
So this locked in, a lot of rocks and rocks.
What about Matt, was he included in?
Matt, he knew about, he couldn't make it.
Okay.
Matt is working very hard on trying to make sure that all the buildings in the district have the right PPE and-
Oh, I understand. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
Chief?
I'm related to any of stuff. I just would ask permission from the board to request a civil service list from, from state for new driven-to-vent officers. Just, I'll kind of make the process, just start in case. Would see what was going on, have some sort of session with guys if they would believe that the replacement is right now. Oh, we have a special, we have one new driven-to-vent officer, that's Officer Keegan. And I, I don't anticipate her ever coming on, you know, on our, on the force. Just like to have a, an actual list for-
Chief, could you wait for the approval till Tuesday?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Tu, yeah, Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, I'll just give you, just send me your contact and get you to do the announcement.
All right, I think, did we? Yeah, I just have contract negotiations. Police chief will stay for some of that. But I have updates on the other contracts and such. So if the board would vote to go into executive session for contract negotiations for police chief, fire chief, all the units at Silver Lake, and the other unions, highway sergeants, patrol officers. As discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. The board will not be coming back in public session and you won't be making any announcements.
As well as the Halifax Elementary.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I'll second. Troy moved. All right. Did you move it?
Yeah, I moved it.
I second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Troy moved, Troy's second.